I now like to call this meeting to order. It is August tenth, two thousand twenty-one, at nine a.m. Ask that you please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance from Councilmember Ms. Mary McKenna.
Heavenly Father, it's us again. We come to say thank you and to praise and glorify your name. We love the beauty of the sky, the beauty of the birds, the trees, the flowers, our wonderful waterways, all the wildlife in that that supports our community. We ask your blessing on every person here today, on every member of our community, especially Officer Devalt's family and those battling COVID. We ask your blessing on our deliberations, that our decisions be made with you in mind. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. McKenna. Onto item three, motion finding that the advanced posting and notice requirements of Article eight point one-two-zero-zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas have been met in relation to all minutes impending ordinances and resolutions on this agenda, and that the reading of such items be confined to the captions as are agreed upon by the ordinances and resolutions. Do I have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge.
Aye.
Ms. McKenna.
Aye.
Ms. Salter.
Aye.
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Onto item four, citizen comments. At this time, comments will be taken from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker. Your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council's consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to notify city staff prior to the start of the meeting. The first name that I have today is Adrian Martinez. Please come forward, state your name, your address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Gracia Davalos. I'm here to translate Mr. Martinez. I don't know his address.
It's okay. Ask him.
Can I say his direction? Yes, my name is Adrian Martinez. My address is thirty-three, one-one, thirty-three, one-zero, Hillcrest, Orange, Texas. He gave me this paper with his, we know we only have three minutes, so he gave me a paper with all his ideas, and I'm gonna try to translate everything that he wants to do. Mr. Martinez has a landscaping company for already a year. He's been working on residential areas. And Mr. Martinez, he's, he has some, he wants to help this city of Orange to get more beautiful and to improve some green areas, public green areas. And he was specific on two areas that he's been looking around his neighborhood. Is the address on, the first one is Kitty Chaping Avenue in Bancroft Road. That's like a area with two mini baseball stadiums. He's concerned because those areas are not clear enough for the kids to go and play there or practice after school or something. So he wants the city of Orange know that he is able to do that job.
Did you say Kitty Chaping?
Yes.
Yes.
Kitty Chaping.
Kitty Chaping and Bancroft Road.
Right.
And Bancroft?
Yes.
Okay.
And he's able to clear those areas. And also, he's concerned about the lights corners, the lights. He's been seeing a lot of woods and ants nest on those areas, so he's able to do that job too. And he's willing to work with the city on budget, so he's willing to take any offers. Or if you need him to make an estimate, he can do that also. And I believe that's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and if there is any, that's the only name on the list, but if there's anyone else who would like to address the council, please come forward, state your name, address in three minutes, please.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for allowing me just a few minutes to come back. And we said a couple of months ago that I would start coming back regularly, so this is my attempt to be regular. But Dina Hughes and I am the Chief Executive Officer for Triangle Area Network, or TAN Healthcare. And of course, we have a health clinic here in Orange on Sixteenth Street, thirty-seven, thirty-seven, Sixteenth Street. And this week is National Health Centers Week. And so it is really, really exciting because this is an opportunity for us to come back into the community and really highlight some of the services and make sure that the community is aware of what we have going on. And we all know, we've been through a lot of hardships over the last few years. And in addition to it being National Health Centers Week, TAN is also celebrating five years in the community. And so we're really excited about the fact that we can kind of do a little horn-tooting and at the same time make sure that people understand the services that are provided. So I wanted to give you an update on pediatrics as well. So remember the last time I was here, I said, we have PD, we have PD. Well, PD is coming, and they are coming. And it is amazing because moms are not only signing up, they're like, okay, I brought one today, can I bring all four tomorrow? And we are able to get them in and get them seen. And so we're really, really excited about the fact that the community is recognizing that that service is available, that Wendy Ames, our nurse practitioner, is doing an amazing job, and they're coming in. So I just wanted to let you know that the services are definitely being utilized. The other service I just wanted to mention for the community's awareness is transportation. We don't want transportation to be a barrier to care. And I know with COVID right now, it's hard. It's hard to get in a vehicle, it's hard to be in close encounters with people because we're kind of back to that same space. But with our transportation, it's a van. We don't stuff everyone in the van. We take one person or one or two people at a time. And so there is space available so that we are continuing to be mindful of what's going on in the community, but still trying to reduce barriers to care. So I just wanted to come back and say hello and let you know how things were going with us and, you know, happy National Health Centers Week. And of course, you know, everyone's always welcome to come by and see our facility at any time. So thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Okay, if not, we will close citizen comments and move to city announcements. Mr. Coontz.
Mr. Wolf has somebody he'd like to introduce.
Okay.
Mayor, council, I am very pleased this morning to introduce you to my new engineering assistant. He's a fine young engineer. He's a graduate of Lamar University. He's a veteran. He's got at least ten years' experience with the railroad and a number of other types of experience. His name is James Ingram, and I want to welcome him to the city.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Welcome.
He's a local boy. He lives just north of Mauriceville in Orange County.
Oh, that's great.
Look this way, please. So he's not scared of hurricanes.
Well, congratulations and welcome. Thank you. We're happy to have you. All right, so that means now we can put more stuff on you, right? You got an assistant now. Thank you so much, and congratulations. Okay, on to consent agenda item number six, July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, Orange Economic Development Corporation meeting minutes, and July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one, regular city council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge.
Aye.
Ms. McKenna.
Aye.
Ms. Salter.
Aye.
Mr. Bailey. Okay, motion pass. Oh, Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Sorry, you got that deep voice, I didn't hear what's saying.
I was a little quiet on that one, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Motion passes on to public hearing. Conduct a public hearing to allow citizens to comment on the two thousand twenty-one action plan, annual action plan, year three of the five-year consolidated plan for community development block grant funds. Ms. Monson.
Yes, as part of our citizens' participation plan, we have to have two public hearings at city council. We had the first one on March the twenty-fifth. This is our second one here, and we had four other meetings at various locations, various times, in order for people to come and comment. At this time, we have had no comments from the public.
Okay, so are there any comments on the public meeting? Okay, if there are no meeting comments, we will close the public hearing and move to resolutions. Thank you, Ms. Monson. Consider a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager, Michael Coontz, to submit on behalf of the City of Orange, the year-three annual action plan of the city's five-year consolidated plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Ms. Monson.
Yes, we are getting ready to submit our annual action plan to HUD for year three of our five-year consolidated plan. The total amount of funds was three hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And I included the annual action plan for you in the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I want to recuse myself from this vote.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge.
Aye.
Ms. Salter.
Aye.
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay?
Vote to.
And I'll vote on this one, and I say aye as well. Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Monson. On to item eight B, consider a resolution of the city council of the City of Orange, Texas nominating a candidate for the Board of Directors for the Orange County Appraisal District. Mr. Coontz.
Mayor, council, this morning, we're nominating someone for the Board of Directors at the appraisal district. We're not voting, we'll be voting later this year, but Dr. Susan Crockett, who currently sits on that board, she is willing to continue doing so.
I love her too.
But if y'all have somebody else y'all would like to do, you can.
I'd like to make a motion to continue with Ms. Crockett.
Sure.
I think she's been wonderful. Okay, we have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge.
Aye.
Ms. McKenna.
Aye.
Ms. Salter.
Aye.
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And congratulations to Ms. Crockett, and we thank her for her support of the community.
Yes, sir.
Item eight C, consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an inter-local agreement with Deweyville Independent School District for the use of their facilities for the sheltering of authorized city personnel and equipment in the event of a natural disaster. Ms. Brown.
Mayor, council, this is the same thing we've done before, but when I send it to him about two weeks prior to the last meeting, then he sends it back with some changes that they wanted to make. So guy has looked over it, and there's no problem with it, so we're just going, coming, bringing it back to you again.
If we may, they wanted to have what I call first dibs if they needed it, their campus for their people, Newt County. It's kind of one of those, like, of course. So that's the only change from the last time we saw it.
Okay.
Okay.
That makes sense. I mean, because if it's, they may need to use it as a shelter for their area.
Right.
Gotcha. Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion from Ms. McKenna, a second from Mr. Burge. Mr. Burge.
Aye.
Ms. McKenna.
Aye.
Ms. Salter.
Aye.
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Brown. On to item eight D, consider a resolution awarding a contract to Tanks Coating Incorporated in the amount of five hundred and ninety thousand for the Strickland Drive Elevator Stores Tank Rehabilitation. Mr. Wolf.
Yes, Mayor, council, thank you. We recently opened bids on the rehabilitation of our Strickland Drive Water Tower. The low bid was in the amount of five hundred and ninety thousand, and it was Tankes Coating Incorporated. We recommend award to that company.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments from Mr. Wolf? Okay, if not, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge.
Aye.
Ms. McKenna.
Aye.
Ms. Salter.
Aye.
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Onto item eight, I'm sorry, nine A, consider a motion declaring equipment nineteen eighty-three Ford tractor, two thousand four Ford F-350, two thousand six Ford F-750, two thousand seven Jet Rudder, two thousand eight Ford F-350, two thousand nine Ford E-150, two thousand eleven Ford Crown, two thousand eleven Ford F-150, two thousand twelve Ford F-150, two thousand fourteen Ford F-150, two thousand fourteen Ford F-550 as surplus and authorizing disposal by auction through Renee Bates Auctioneer Incorporated. Mr. Wolf.
Yes, Mayor, council, we have found over the years that as we get a better return on our vehicles rather than trade them off, that we auction them out for bid. And so these vehicles represent the ones that we are replacing both last year and the upcoming budget year, so we ask for your approval.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge.
Aye.
Ms. McKenna.
Aye.
Ms. Salter.
Aye.
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item nine B, consider a motion to approve action taken by the Orange EDC to accept the purchase offer from the City of Orange in the amount of nine thousand four hundred and eight for two tracts of land adjacent to the Orange Police Department, and to authorize the execution of a special warranty deed to said tracts. Mr. Treyanne.
Yes, sir, so this is the final public approval step in terms of moving this project forward. We will transition it with the special warranty deed as it's mentioned, and the City of Orange Police Department is working on a plan at this point in time to consider the construction of a building or some type of garage to house our high-water rescue vehicles. So this is the final public action step that needs to be taken, and then we'll go ahead and execute the special warranty deed. And we've been under the advisement of Guy Goodson and his team in terms of how we handle this transaction. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I don't have any.
Any, no questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge.
Aye.
Ms. McKenna.
Aye.
Ms. Salter.
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey.
Thank you.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Treyanne. Item nine C, consider a motion approving action taken by the Orange EDC in the form of a motion of intent approving an EDC incentive for free state sellers at forty-seven oh-two Tejas Parkway, Orange, Texas, seven-seven-six-three-two, for eligible infrastructure improvements in an amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty-seven thousand for the purpose of economic development. Mr., I mean, Ms. Leanne Dallas.
Thank you. Sorry about the confusion.
It's okay.
So this is a motion of intent to approve what the EDC approved this morning, which was, in fact, a one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar EDC incentive to free state sellers for phase one of their three-phased improvement. Phase one is a little over half a million dollar investment on their part where they are planning on creating an event lawn, a pavilion, a dock to Adams Bayou, as well as improvements and changes to parking. And so if you all approve this today, we will go into the sixty-day waiting period where the development agreement is created.
Okay, all right. Any questions or comments from Ms. Leanne? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge.
Aye.
Ms. McKenna.
Aye.
Ms. Salter.
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Dallas.
Thank you.
On to item nine D, consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two proposed budget for the City of Orange. Ms. Zito.
Yes, good morning, council and mayor. All the department heads and the departments, everybody pitches in and puts together their budget request. Finance Department gathers it up, assembles this book for y'all and for the whole city. And so this motion is just to acknowledge that y'all are receiving the book that I laid out for y'all. And next week, we're gonna have a workshop to discuss certain items. We can make changes. This is just proposed, our first draft, so to speak. I think Mike has a few comments to make.
Some very high-level comments, if you will. First of all, just for those couple of council members who weren't able to make it this morning, we'll deliver their proposed budget to them. I would, and again, since we're gonna have a workshop next Tuesday, I'm not gonna get down in the weeds, but just a couple of comments. I do encourage you to read the budget message that's in the front of the budget. One thing you may notice that's a little different from years prior, you know, a budget, three parts, revenue, expenses, and a reserve fund. You will see where, what I'm putting in there says, we are slightly spending more money than revenue because we typically budget very conservatively. But for instance, this year, we project that we're gonna make more in two thousand twenty-one in sales tax to cover that slight deficit, if you will, one hundred and thirty-six thousand two hundred and fourteen. That is a point zero zero six one hundredth of a percent. To me, it's just a little bit more transparent than saying it's a balanced budget. So anyway, I don't have any concerns from that, but we can certainly discuss that further. And if you will, council, if you have, just for instance, if you turned to page seventeen, and that's just a random page I picked out, and that's just for the audience, that's the city secretary's budget, sorry, Tricia, but just happened to pick that one out, but there's one, two, three, four, five, six columns. If you start on the left, it says two thousand and, yeah, two thousand and eighteen actual amount. So that's what budgeted, actually, at the end of the year, those are the budget numbers for two thousand eighteen. We go to the right, two thousand nineteen actual, and then also two thousand twenty actual. So that way, we'll go all the way to the left where it says two thousand twenty-two, city manager proposed. That's what, again, the staff and I propose for this coming year. But that gives you some historical data.
That's good.
And also, though, if you see the two columns that say two thousand twenty-one amended, and again, two thousand twenty-one estimated amount, because again, we are still in two thousand twenty-one, so we really won't know two thousand twenty-one actual until sometime in October. So, you know, a budget, all this hard work that Cheryl and all the staff does, somewhere in there, they gotta print all this, and so they gotta say, boom, in this point in time, here it is. But again, so from left to right, you see eighteen, nineteen, twenty, then the estimated for two thousand twenty-one, and then again, what we proposed in two thousand twenty-two. So, and now, this also, and I guess the last thing before we move on, this budget, the proposed budget is at the same tax rate as the current year. So at eight zero five nine, point eight zero five nine, so again, basically on a hundred thousand dollars of taxable value, the property owner would pay eight hundred and five dollars and ninety cents. Now, again, here in a few minutes, we will cap the tax rate for the coming year. Doesn't mean that's what we have to accept, but we're gonna cap it at eight zero five nine. This is what we propose. Again, that's no change to the tax rate. Again, so everybody out there, listen, if your property values went up, like mine did, and the tax rate stays the same, yes, you will pay more property taxes.
But we are not raising taxes.
But in the, but in the paper, in the paper, I'm sorry, we gotta put, we're raising your taxes.
Gotcha.
We can't do anything about that. That's the state.
Yeah, gotcha.
Well, thank you for.
Very broad, oh, and the last, though, if y'all have questions, I'm telling you, if you look through here, thousands of numbers. So if you have questions over this next week, and you got a question for me, give me a holler. Got a question for Cheryl, holler. Because again, hey, in the last three years, why we spent this, it's like, you know, we got, she got files and all that stuff, so we can find that information, we just need a little heads up. So we prefer doing it during the work week than, you know, if we just walk in, so.
Gotcha.
But ask questions.
Okay.
And I'll say again, there's no dumb questions, because I ask the same dumb questions every year.
All right.
Cheryl hasn't yelled at me yet.
It's okay, so do we have a motion acknowledging receipt?
Motion.
Motion.
Do we have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna.
Aye.
Ms. Salter.
Aye.
Mr. Bailey.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zito, thank you to city staff, thank you to Mr. Coontz for those explanations. And I do want to thank city staff for working very hard. The whole world has been through a lot since two thousand twenty, and here we are again with the threat of, you know, this new Delta variant and things like that. And for staff to sit there and to work to make everything fit so that city council did not have to raise taxes this year. It's the same number as last year. That just shows that we are committed to doing what's right for the community and ensuring that we are great stewards of the taxpayers' money. So thank you so much, we appreciate it. Onto item nine E, consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the two thousand twenty-one certified appraised values and the corresponding reports from the Orange County Appraisal District. Ms. Zito.
Yes, so the appraisal district is the ones that values your property and gives you your values. They give us a report, that's how the tax rates are calculated and how we come up with our tax revenue. The total market value, as he alluded to, increased from last year. It's a million six twenty-one, a billion, six twenty-one million nine seventeen eight thirty-five. So that's an increase from last year's market value of eighty-seven million. That's great. Our city's growing, our properties are valued higher. However, that's what lowers your tax rate, so just our effective rate, or our no new revenue rate. So I just wanted to point out that that report, you have the report from the appraisal district, will show the market value, the taxable value. Their average home market value is one thirty-two, taxable value one oh-five. That's an increase of around ten thousand from last year. So an average house in that price range went up about ten thousand. Not everybody's dead, obviously, but on average. So this motion is to accept the acknowledged receipt that the appraisal district did provide us with our new numbers.
Okay, and where is that, is that, what page is this on?
Page seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven, okay. I just want to make a note, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge.
Aye.
Ms. McKenna.
Aye.
Ms. Salter.
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Onto item nine F, consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the certification of two thousand twenty-one anticipated collection rate and two thousand twenty excess debt collection. Ms. Zito.
Yes, this is from the Tax Assessor Collector, Karen Fisher. We get this every year, this is part of our calculation for our rates. She has determined that we have a ninety-two percent collection, anticipated collection rate for the next year, and this is just from our, we have to acknowledge receipt of this also.
Okay, do we have a motion to acknowledge receipt?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge.
Aye.
Ms. McKenna.
Aye.
Ms. Salter.
Aye.
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, motion passes. Item nine G, consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the statement of two thousand twenty-one tax rates and the corresponding worksheets from the Orange County Tax Assessor Collector. Ms. Zito.
Yes, so this is, starting on page ninety-three, is our new calculated rates from the Tax Assessor Collector. It also includes all her calculations, what I went through, I agree with her, calculated on my own, and then I compare mine to hers. The no new revenue rate is what is calculated, God bless you.
Thank you.
Is calculated to calculate the amount of revenue that it would, the tax rate it would take to create the same amount of revenue as last year, based on this year's values. So if your values are higher, your rate is, this rate, no new revenue rate's gonna be lower. That's just the relationship of property values versus the no new revenue rate. Last year, it was point seven nine, seven oh-three, and this year, it's point seven seven eight eight zero. The voter approval rate, that's the calculated maximum rate allowed by law without a vote, without going to the voters to increase it. So this rate is also calculated, this is also related to the property values. However, this year, they have new laws according with the voter approval rate. If, without any disasters or anything, the cap is three point five percent. So the calculations are made, your voter approval rate will only be three point five percent of that. However, when you have a disaster in your year, which we did, we had Hurricane Laura in this past year, so that increased our voter approval rate. So without going to the voters, we could go up to point eight five three nine nine. Not that we intend to.
No.
By no means, but that is the maximum allowed by law without going to the voters. She also calculates our debt rate, which is point oh nine nine two nine. The debt rate is the portion of the tax rate in whole that we set aside every month to go to pay our debt, our bond payments. So that's a little higher than last year, but that's because last year, we had a little extra reserves in the debt service fund, so we used those up. Well, now we've used them up, so now we have to allot a little bit more of our tax rate to pay our debt payments. So this motion is just for me to explain this to you and for you to acknowledge receipt of these tax rates from the Tax Assessor Collector.
Well, I appreciate you explaining it, okay? Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge.
Aye.
Ms. McKenna.
Aye.
Ms. Salter.
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey. Okay, motion passes, thank you, Ms. Zito. Onto item nine H, discussion and possible action on the tax rate. If proposed tax rate will exceed the no new revenue tax rate, take record vote and schedule a public hearing. The notice of public hearing on tax increase for the City of Orange, Texas will be published and posted per the requirements of the Texas Local Government Code, section one four zero, point zero one zero. Mr. Coombs?
Mayor, Council, um, again, this is what I mentioned a few minutes ago, we need to set a tax rate that we will not exceed. And again, I propose of the eight zero five nine zero, which is the same as the current year. Yes, it will raise more property tax revenue, yes, we'll put a notice in the paper that we're raising your taxes. No, we're not raising the tax rate. Yes, we all get frustrated with that language that we're mandated, but we gotta do what we gotta do. We will have a hearing, I believe that's August the thirty-first. So again, we will have a, a, and again, I'm kind of getting off track, but we'll have a meeting, we're, we're gonna be busy this month, August the tenth, August seventeenth, August twenty-fourth, or today's August tenth, so seventeen, twenty-fourth, and thirty, seventeen, twenty-fourth, thirty-one, five thirty here.
Go get some, that's some lottery numbers right there.
Yeah. Yeah, I think Goodson wanted to say a couple words.
No, it matter, just because this is a record vote, you voted well, so please, everyone, uh, vote, and, uh, because of the shortness of counsel, we do appreciate your consideration of this motion.
Okay. And so because it is a, uh, what, what's take a hand vote, but a motion has to be made, so, um...
Motion to cap the tax rate at point eight zero five nine.
They have a motion to read.
Yeah, so if somebody wants to make a motion, they wrote it down for us, so we don't mess it up. So if anybody wants to make that motion?
I'll make it.
Okay, so then you have to read this right here.
You have to read it.
At the bottom?
The, the two, the two paragraphs.
I move the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of tax rate of zero point eight zero five nine zero per hundred dollar value, which is effectively a three point four eight increase in tax rate and scheduling a public hearing on Tuesday, August thirty-first, twenty twenty, at five thirty P M.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, so now we will go individually, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
And I as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Let that be the longest motion I ever made.
All right.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David.
All right, item ten, recess the meeting of Orange City Council. We're gonna recess the regular meeting of the Orange City Council to convene a meeting of the City of Orange, you don't have to leave, to convene a City of Orange Employee Benefits Trust to approve selection for medical insurance, dental insurance, vision insurance, and life insurance for city employees. So now we will convene the meeting of City of Orange Employee Benefits Trust. I would now like to call this part of the meeting to order. And the first thing is to consider a motion acknowledging receipt of an authorizing trustee Spears to sign the City of Orange Employee Benefit Perspective Premium Projection Renewal and the Benefit Program Application from Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas for the period of October first, two thousand twenty-one, through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Ms. Zito?
Yes, so we, uh, our consultants, um, McGriff and Siebles, they have, uh, got a good, a fair renewal from Blue Cross Blue Shield, and you, if you remember, past two years, we've had decreases. Couldn't be happier with that, but we knew an increase was coming. Uh, they got it down to nine percent, which is pretty reasonable in this market right now, from what we understand, so we accepted that. This, um, this motion is to acknowledge receipt of that, their projection, and it's on page one twelve of your packet, will show the, the nine percent increase. So we need to, um, staff recommends that you accept this proposal.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments from Ms. Zito? All right, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Yes.
Now onto item eleven C, consider a motion approving employee medical insurance renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas at three million one hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars annual premium for a period of one year. Ms. Zito?
So this motion is just to renew and let you know how much the annual premium is for one year. It's a little over three million dollars, which is the, includes the nine percent increase.
Okay.
Which is providing insurance for other employees of the city.
For all our employees, yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Right.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item eleven D, consider a motion renewing employee dental insurance with MetLife for a period of one year at a point four percent increase in rates. Ms. Zito?
Yes, last year, MetLife, uh, for our dental insurance, did not have an increase. So this year, they had a very slight increase, point four percent, that's very slight, so we, we accept that. So we recommend renewing with MetLife for our dental insurance.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item eleven E, consider a motion renewing employee vision insurance with MetLife for a period of one year adding zero percent increase in rates. Yay.
Yeah, exactly, and vision, employees pay that a hundred percent on their, out of their paycheck. So, um, we have a zero percent increase, so that's fabulous, so we recommend going with MetLife again for vision.
Okay. How, anybody make a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Onto my, item eleven F, consider a motion renewing employee life insurance with segment group insurance for a period of one year adding zero percent increase in rates. Ms. Zito?
So this is the employee life insurance, everyone gets a very small life insurance policy. Um, we, this is the second year of a two-year contract with a zero percent increase, so we recommend continuing with this contract at no increase.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter? And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
All right, motion passes, thank you, Ms. Zito. And, um, happy to once again be able to help, you know, supply good benefits for the employees of the City of Orange. Onto item eleven G, adjourn the meeting of City of Orange Employee Benefits Trust. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, a motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, we will adjourn that part, and now we will reconvene meeting of the City of Orange City Council. Consider a motion authorizing the monthly transfer of funds from the City of Orange to the City of Orange Employee Benefits Trust to play, to pay for employee-related benefits. Ms. Zito?
Yes, uh, Mayor, this is just a formality that for, to give us authority, authority to transfer our funds monthly, which we do, to put all the premiums we collect and the, the city's portion into a trust fund, bank account at the bank separately, to pay these, uh, premiums for our insurance.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion by Ms. Salter, a second by Mr. Burge. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, thank you, Ms. Zito. Can we do our item twelve B, so city council can get some insurance?
Yeah.
No, I'm just joking. All right, thirteen reports, city manager report.
Uh, no report, but just again, I'm sincere, Council, if y'all have any questions about the budget before Tuesday, feel free to call.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, city council report, starting at my right, Mr. Bailey?
Yes, Sunday morning about eleven o'clock, I started down two lane, headed toward sixty-two, and I come up on our constable precinct too, working a young man that has some community service to do, picking up garbage. That mess that I had that was down close to my home, and they had already, he had made it around the corner. So I stopped to thank him, and he informed me that he was having a meeting this week with parole officers and felony probation officers, and that he may have about thirty to do a little community service toward, that kind of community service towards the end of the month.
Awesome.
So I said, please call.
Thank you.
That one individual put in about four hours of hard work and had that whole mess cleaned up.
Wow.
That's awesome.
That is very awesome. Thank you for sharing, Mr. Bailey. Okay, anything else, sir?
No, ma'am, that's it.
All right, Ms. Salter?
I just wanna thank everybody for, uh, for just coming out, and I also wanted to, uh, let, uh, the constituents, residents of Orange know that, um, we, uh, have been blessed with another, uh, food bank in our area. Uh, several people have, you know, are, are struggling, uh, and so, um, there's a food bank that is located at thirteen oh one West, uh, Park Avenue. Anchor of Hope Ministries have now officially opened a food bank. And on the first and the third Saturday of every month, uh, people can come and shop. And they don't just get bags, they can come and shop and get the things that they want. Uh, so, and it's from ten to two, so I wanted to let everybody know about that. That is a great thing for us to have, uh, in our area.[1588.81]